Evening, I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this Monday, October 16th of 2023. I will like to introduce the... Oh, I didn't get there. Six forty-two?
Nine forty-two.
Nine forty-two, I'm sorry. Diverted the number. We have the PAC number nine forty-two here, and they're going to be following the invocation by leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then they have a few words to say. So please stand with me for the invocation.
Yes, if we would just have a moment of silence.
And if you would be kind to come forward to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What our pledge of allegiance means to us. I pledge allegiance, me and individual, a committee of one promise to be faithful, loyal, and true.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the symbol of freedom, old glory, that stands for and represents all fifty states and territories, and to the Republic for which it stands. I pledge my loyalty to the way we govern ourselves, representatives of the people, by the people, and for the people.
One nation under God, that our God-given freedom is protected as all men are created equal and given freedoms that cannot be taken away, indivisible. We pledge to stay together as a country even if we disagree with each other.
With liberty and justice for all. Freedom to have our religion, gather together, live our lives, and speak our minds with no threats, fear, or retaliation, all with being fair and right in our judgment of others.
Thank you.
Please stay there.
On behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners, we'd like to present you each an official Lee County pin.
And we thank you very much. All right, you have the agenda in front of you. We do have two add-ons. The first add-on is going to be under approval of consent agenda, which is the approval of contract with Mosley Architects for the jail feasibility study. And that will be item two L. And then under new business, six G is an add-on, a request for Bread of Life Ministries for funding to operate an extreme weather shelter. Anything else anyone would like to add?
Anyone object to moving six C, six D, six F to the consent agenda?
Is that a motion, sir?
It is.
Okay. We can... Anybody disapprove of moving six C, six D, and six E?
F, not consent.
F.
I'm sorry, six F.
Yes.
I would like to read the green light resolution, if that's okay.
We can still approve it, you can read it.
Okay. All righty. All right, we'll move those to the consent agenda, that is six C, D, and F. Any other changes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the... I do need the approval of the consent agenda, please, as amended. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We do have public hearing this evening, request to hold a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-five Lee County Community Transportation Program Mobility Manager Application. And I see Ms. Debbie Davidson is coming forward. Okay. This is happening again.
We had a public hearing a couple back in September for our grants that we were proposing for FY twenty-five for the county of Lee Transit System. It was brought to our attention that instead of just a part-time mobility manager position, we could apply, we hope, for one and a half positions. So what I bring as a public hearing tonight, and it's required by NC DOT, is an additional approximately eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars for a full-time mobility manager who will come in and work directly with Colts and some things that we have ideas with rebranding, trying to get the word out that Colts is not just human services, it is also public access. If I can just kick in here, it really hit me at the opioid forum the other night when Ms. Thompson, Sandra, I think Thompson's last name, anyway, she made the remark that these young men and women were not getting to their treatments because if they have two no-shows with Medicaid, then they are taken off, and that's very true. Colts runs the Medicaid transportation, and when they've missed two appointments. With some new ideas that I have and hope to bring to the table and some grant funding, then this would not happen, where they could actually click an app and they would have access to direct transportation within an hour of the time that they needed. So this is one of the things the mobility managers will be working on in the next four to five months, hopefully.
Questions for Debbie. Commissioner Sharp?
No, I just moved to approve.
Okay. Well, where's the public hearing?
Oh, my bad. Yeah.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm still good.
Any questions?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck. Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Good.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty-five Lee County Community Transportation Program Mobility Managers application. I'm going to ask if there's anyone here in support of or opposed to, please come forward and speak. Anyone here in support of wishes to speak at the public hearing? Anybody opposed? Going once, going twice? Don't want to say anything, Debbie? Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have now closed the public hearing. Thank you. We do have public comments. We have three individuals. And just a brief note, if you'd be so kind when you approach the microphone, please state your name and your address for the clerk. And the first person is Thomas C. Buher. Is that Buher or Booker?
Booker.
Booker.
B-O-O-R.
Got it. Buher, sir. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Buher, Thomas Clayton Buher, and I live at 119 Fourview Lane, Sanford, North Carolina. This is not a sermon, but to establish a foundation that for what I am going to request, I must speak from an overt and articulate Christian worldview. Simply stated, God has revealed himself to us supernaturally through the inspired word of God, the Bible, and through creation itself, which declares the glory of God and his power and deity, so that men are without excuse. Additionally, he has written into the heart and consciences of men the holy requirements of his law, the Ten Commandments, so that it is in our conscience to condemn lying, cheating, stealing, murder, adultery, and homosexuality. My point is this, that not only has God revealed to us through the scriptures that man is made in his image, male and female, and that there's a proper relationship between the two, such that he condemns effeminacy, bestiality, homosexuality, and incest, but that he has also branded into the conscience of man that such things are wicked. A people who will not suppress but follow the right dictates of their consciences will prohibit these things either by law or cultural shaming. Places of public adult entertainment, hosting drag shows or drag story hour for children should not be allowed a place in our community, but sadly Sanford is witness to those who are doing precisely that. There are men of drag who have strutted their suggestively exposed feminized bodies not only before adults but children as well. Another sordid event is a story hour where children are placed in the sight and hearing of a man dressed as a woman, as though a man dressed and behaving this way is wholesome and good for the children. I believe it is part of an agenda to normalize this wicked behavior in the minds of children so that not only resistance to it will be minimized, but that there will be more and more who will identify with it and practice it themselves. Whether the purveyors of drag intend this or not, the result will be an indelible effect on the minds and emotions of children, causing them to make decisions that adversely affect their lives, perhaps even to mutilate their bodies through transgender surgery. This is wickedness, and wickedness that has reached a heinous degree. It is the kind of wickedness that has come under God's wrath and destruction, as in Sodom and Gomorrah. My desire is that all such places of drag entertainment were legally shut down. That would be the most appropriate and God-pleasing thing to do. As an interim step, I propose that this council compose and pass an ordinance that firstly will declare all such entertainment as adult entertainment, requiring whatever licenses, permits, or legal recognition akin to that which would be required of so-called strip joints. And secondly, will prohibit the attendance of those entertainments by any under the age of eighteen without qualification or exemption.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Thomas F. Buher. And just state your name as well as address, and you do have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Thomas F. Buher. My address is 120 Beach Leaf Court in Cameron, North Carolina, and I'm here to speak as a minister in Sanford, North Carolina. And as the previous speaker, my father had noted, we were preaching the word of God last... yesterday, out where the Sanford Yoga Event had a drag story hour for children. And you may know, this is not the first time that they and those associated with them have done this. Now, people, men dressed as women shaking their bodies around in front of children, simulating and emulating what happens in strip clubs, is very evidently not appropriate and is lewd behavior. You may or may not have seen the videos that have been... that we have taken and recorded. Yes, unfortunately, along with our church group preaching, there were some dressed up in attire and a very foolish provocative church that... a shirt that we would not at all approve of, but they were not part of our group. But the focus of what should be seen and what was going on there is behind closed doors, people were bringing their precious young children to be exposed to all sorts of filth and depravity by men gesticulating before them. And in this case, it was a multitude of people. They've posted their own pictures of this online, reading them stories, confusing their minds about what it means to be a man and what it means to be a woman. Now, I appeal to your moral senses and moral conscience about these matters to realize that there really is no place for this for children, and the good for adults on this is highly in question as well. But for a city, a society, and for our county here, are we going to continue to permit these things going on in our town as if it's perfectly healthy, as if it's perfectly normal and fine? Surely, and you can see the video where the cops came out, because they called the cops while we were speaking there on the public sidewalk, they said there was no ordinance in place to restrict this, that they had no cause to go in there and investigate or shut this down. Well, if this isn't lewd behavior, or indecent exposures, or liberties, or whatever to a minor, I'm not sure what is. And as a minister, I must say, God will hold us accountable, and we want to see all these people, from the drag queens to everybody that was there, come do faith and repentance and trust in Christ and live in the image of God that they were made in. But we need to have enforcement of our ordinances or a new ordinance on the book to forbid this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Deborah Matthews. Ma'am, when you come forward, please state your name and your address, and again, you have three minutes.
My name is Deborah Matthews. I live at 1424 Pickett Road, Sanford, North Carolina. Hello and thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Yesterday at 1:00 PM, there was a drag queen story time for children that lasted two hours. This is the second year in a row this has taken place in our city. The children in our county and city are precious gifts from God and should never be abused or subjected to the kind of show that took place yesterday. I am tired of talking about it with my family and like-minded people, so I went to the Sanford Yoga and Community Center at 12:30 PM in an attempt to turn parents and their children away. There were five to six children who went inside, and I pleaded with two parents to not attend this event. One mother had a daughter about twelve, and a man had two children between the ages of five and eight, and this man did not accompany his children inside to this drag queen story hour. This is just wrong. A child's brain has not developed to the point in which they can understand that men dressing as women is wrong. It is harmful to them, and even if it does not cause immediate damage, it will damage them. I know. I am a survivor and former victim of child sexual abuse. My family knew of the danger I could face, but neglected to caution me or step in and stop it. I am taking a stand for the innocence of our precious children. Innocence was lost as they entered the event yesterday, and it can never be recovered. Our children need you to step up for them and stop allowing them to be in the company of drag queens, either accompanied or unaccompanied. Even as an adult, I am still being treated for PTSD and depression because of my experiences with a predator. Over the years, I have thought of suicide often and even attempted twice. I do not ever want any child to experience the horror I did or anything close. I ask you again to help us get the ball rolling and keep drag queens away from our children. They do not belong in our city, county, or state. Thank you again.
And just for your information, did this occur... or for my information, did this incur within the city?
Yes, sir.
You do know the city council does meet tomorrow night? Okay, under the... seeing there is no new business, or excuse me, old business, new business is request for relief for late listing payment. And Commissioner... Mr. Brown. I did introduce Mr. Brown to the Cub Scouts. He's one of the individuals that this board hires, and he does a very good job of keeping the tax collection rate very high. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Future taxpayers, right? Thank you for time before the board tonight, sir, Chairman, Chairman and other commissioners and staff. Tonight, we come before you with the late listing penalties. There are two of them, one by LTR Products, I think that's Liberty Tire Recycling. In the resolution that you have adopted, I'm going to be reading the summary that kind of ties in and relates to your resolution that y'all have approved. And this is by pleasure of the board, your decision. So the taxpayer, Liberty Tire Recycling or LTR LLC, has requested relief for a late listing penalty. They mailed a letter requesting relief for late listing penalty, which was received by our office on August 21st. By statute, 105307A, the taxpayer is required to file a listing with our office by January 31st. No extension was requested by the taxpayer. The taxpayer filed a listing with our office on March 7th. Since the listing was filed late, the assessor must apply 10% penalty to properties that are late listed per 105312H. The penalty in this matter by the county is seven thousand and seventy-four dollars and seven cents. This property is also located within the city of Sanford. We have notified them of this information. After review of the resolution, the taxpayer does meet 1C, where the listing was filed between 31 and 59 days. With that, the penalty could be reduced by 25%. If reduced by 25%, the penalty would be five thousand, three hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents. If the board follows policy under item two, the penalty would be held to the maximum of five thousand dollars. Since the taxpayer is a new taxpayer, there have been no prior late listings. Also, this taxpayer is not receiving any economic development incentive grants by the county. Lastly, per the resolution, the board has reserved... the board has reserved the right to compromise, settle, or adjust outside the provisions of the guidelines on a case-by-case basis. If I can also add to this LTR matter, we had some questions regarding their listing when we received the letter. So we pulled the listing, we had a couple of things that we looked at, and we were like, we wanted to address a couple of matters. So we did contact the company, and they did respond back to us, and we've received some information late last week. So the information we received late last week was amended listing. So with that amended listing that they filed with us, the value was around twenty-six thousand dollars, a little bit more than twenty-six thousand in value. If we did the depreciation, calculated the tax bill, calculated the penalty, the tax bill for city, county, plus penalties and everything would be over three hundred dollars. The portion of the county late-list penalty, and we talked to them, and they wanted us to bring and add this to the issue tonight, the county late-list penalty would be over around fifteen dollars. If you apply the same rationale that we did to the information I've just read off with the other one, the penalty would go from just over fifteen dollars to around eleven, twelve dollars. And they were wanting us to add, see if you would consider that also in this request tonight. If I need to clarify the amendment that they've... the amended listing with us, I'll be glad to do that if I need to.
Questions for Mr. Brown. Commissioner Carver?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
What have we done in the past?
This is the board's resolution that we're looking at, so...
The last time you were up here, do you remember what we ended up doing?
I think you followed the resolution, because if I'm not mistaken, the... one of the last times that I was here, possibly before that, the actual resolution was rewritten in 2021 possibly, because the language had some issues that needed to be kind of clarified. So if I'm not mistaken, the last time I was here, I think you possibly followed the resolution, if I'm not mistaken.
I think you're correct. Thank you. Commissioner Vorbeck?
I'm just trying to follow. So March of this year, they applied, or March of last year, they established themselves?
The listings are to be in our office by January 31st.
Twenty-two, thirty.
Thirty-first.
Okay.
The 31st of January for '23.
Yes.
So they actually filed their listing with our office on March 7th.
Okay.
So it was late, and they did not ask for an extension, so...
Okay. And then when... So the fifty... or the seventy-seven hundred, we'll go with that one, is based on your tax assessment of them?
That is a total penalty by the county for the amount of... against the amount of... 10% of the amount of taxes due is that what that penalty is.
Okay. I'm just... I'm having trouble following, going from seventy-seven hundred to three hundred. Did that... was that was still in the same one, or the three hundred was for the second one?
The seventy-seven hundred is, if I go through your resolution with the seventy-seven thousand, seventy-four dollars and seven cents, if I go through your resolution and it can get a 25% reduction, then that amount of those taxes would be reduced to the fifty-three hundred oh five fifty-five.
Okay. I got that. I was just trying to figure out where the...
And then further through your resolution, it says that the cap on the penalty would be that they pay no more than five thousand. So that's when we looked at five thousand would be the answer to... if you followed along with your resolution.
Okay. But didn't you mention three hundred dollars?
Yes, I did. I said that... And the second issue with the same taxpayer, the listing that they had filed in March, okay, when we received the letter in August, we received their late listing relief letter, and then we pulled their return, and there was a couple of things that we looked at, and we're like, we have some issues here, so we need to find out about that.
Okay.
So when we contacted them, we actually got answered to it late last week, either Thursday or Friday last week. So what they did, they actually sent us an amended tax return.
Okay.
So they said, oops, we haven't listed everything with you. We've got about twenty-six thousand more in value that needs to be listed. So with that amended return, if we... when we do... we haven't done the tax bill for it, but we'll do it in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So we'll do the tax bill for this amended part, and when we do, I was talking to the ... I didn't, but one of my staff members, Amy, she contacted the taxpayer and said, do you want this issue with this amended thirty... twenty-six thousand, do you want that to be looked at on the late-list penalty issue also? Because we would put that 10% penalty on that late list of this twenty-six thousand in value.
Okay.
That...
So it's...
The taxes against that would be the three hundred dollars that I spoke of.
Okay. So it's actually both of those? You'd add them together, right?
Yes. So basically...
In essence?
So basically, in nutshell, we would... we wouldn't... the penalty, if you did away with the penalty, we've already... if they've hit the cap, then there wouldn't be a penalty on this. I just thought of that.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
If you've hit the cap of the five thousand.
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be penalty on the amended. I don't know why I didn't think of that earlier, but...
Okay.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, sir. So five thousand is the actual number if we limit it to the cap?
Limit it to the cap.
Right.
So the amended, after I told you what the cap would be, just the five thousand would be the cap. There wouldn't be a cap... there wouldn't be any penalty on this amended part of it.
Right. Follow it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't have any questions, but I would make a motion that we go with the maximum penalty of five thousand.
If I'm not mistaken, is the maximum penalty... Okay, you've got... I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, you got listed the penalty in this manner by the county is seven thousand, seventy-four dollars and seven cents. Is that the maximum?
Seven thousand, seventy-four is the amount of the total penalty. If you adjust it to the 25% as one of the parts, that would be the fifty-three oh fifty-five, fifty-three hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents. Your cap would be part of... it's part of your resolution, so the cap can be no more than five thousand. So we... So we would just take the 5,300 down to $5,000 as a total max of the penalty.
Which is our policy.
As your policy, or your resolution.
Is there a representative from the company here?
I do not believe so.
So they put you up to this?
Yes, sir.
I find it disheartening that this is a state statute that says by this date, you must have filed your property. How is it that this multinational business missed that?
I can't answer that, sir.
Well, that's why also in our resolution, you can do this one time every five, like you can't ask again for the next how many years?
There is, there is language in your resolution.
So they would do this next year again? You can tell them, don't bother, right? This is a one-time deal per, I think X amount of years. I think it's like five.
Right. I think you're speaking to number three, and I think it says that any individual business entity with a listing filed late in the past five consecutive years may be ineligible for a compromise settlement or adjustment.
So if this happens again in the next five years, they're ineligible?
This is a new business. I think they just started last year, so I think that's part of the...
I understand that. And I want to be, well, personally, I would like to be business-friendly, but at the same time, every person sitting in this room, and I did talk to the Cub Scouts and let them know that you have to pay taxes. And yet, these folks failed to follow the statute requiring the listing at a certain date. And I'm still at a loss of what was their excuse?
I may have a letter here that may actually say why. So let me look.
I've looked at the letter that was requesting relief, and it states here, "Please consider removing the late listing penalty at this, as this was our first time filing with the county." I'm sorry. I'm just expressing my point. We do have a motion to approve the late listing penalty of $5,000. Any further discussion? Seeing that there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. To the second late listing penalty issue, and again, I will follow through in some of this dialogue with your resolution. So the taxpayer and tax representative company, Ryan, submitted letters on August 28th and August 15th requesting relief of late listing penalty. Per statute 105307A, taxpayers are required to file a listing with our office by January 31st. The taxpayer did request a listing extension. Pursuant to state statute, extensions are granted. Our county does them until March 15th. And the taxpayer did file a listing with our office that was postmarked March 16th and received on March 21st. Since the late listing was, since the listing was filed late, the assessor must apply 10% amount of penalty per 105312H. The penalty in this matter is $2,465.94. The property is within the city of Sanford, so we have notified them. After review of the resolution, taxpayer does meet 1B of your resolution, where the listing was filed within 30 days of the extension date. With that, the penalty could be reduced up to 50%. If reduced by 50%, the penalty would be $1,232.97. The penalty is less than the maximum cap. Taxpayer has not had any of the late listings in the past five years. The taxpayer is not receiving economic development incentive grant by the county. And lastly, the board has reserved the right to compromise, settle, or adjust outside the provisions of the guidelines on a case-by-case basis.
Questions for Mr. Brown on this case. Commissioner Sharp?
All right, none.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
How long have they been in business? Did you say?
I'm sorry?
How long have they been in business? Did you say, I'm sorry? A long time, right?
I do not see that on their listing form.
Okay, that's fine. And then...
But this is a mobile home park. I think it has been there for a mobile home, manufactured home-type parks. It's been there for some time that I know of.
Okay. No, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Thank you. Commissioner Lovick?
I would just say a comment. I'm wondering what they would do when their rent is late. No one's here from them either, probably. But, so, anyway, no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
If I understand correctly, they requested an extension, and they were, they filed it one day late? Or is the requirement that it has to be received by you?
Well, I think that the mark on this one, I'd have to go back and double-check, but if it's US postmark stamp, if it would have been the 15th, we could have accepted that as... But I think the mark on this one, if I'm not mistaken, was a, either like a Pitney Bowes metered mark. And we can't accept that as the date because, just because they possibly can be changed or such as that. So, but we have March 15th as the date of that stamp. But it was received on March 21st.
Okay. Received on March 21st, and it could have possibly been, like the guy said, he sent it on the 16th. The other thing in his letter implies that somehow he had some issues going on with changing people, and it could have been lost or something to that effect.
Their letter does state they had a turnover in their accounting department.
So it's, unlike the last one we considered, at least they've advanced some sort of an explanation as why they had the problem. And their error was awfully close to the deadline. Anyway, just trying to make sure that that was right.
And as it states here, Mr. Brown, it says Pine Village Mobile Home Court LLC with an address in Littleton, Colorado. So they're a property owner?
Yes, sir. This is the facility, if I'm not mistaken, that is behind Lowe's and kind of goes diagonally back eastward towards 421.
Pleasure of the board?
Uh, motion...
Just to play our policy.
Go ahead. Sorry.
What, your motion again, please?
Just to play our policy.
And that being what?
The full extent or the 50%?
I'm sorry?
The full extent or the 50%?
Oh, 50% is our policy.
Okay.
$1,200 and some dollars.
Yeah.
All right. The motion is reduced by 50%. The penalty would be $1,232.97. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. I know we put it on the consent agenda, but I will read the resolution in supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life. Give me a second. Pull that up. All right. I'm getting brain lock on my... Thank you. I got the Wheel of Death scrolling on my screen. Resolution supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life, veteran status. Whereas, the citizens of Lee County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this county in the armed forces. And whereas, the contribution and sacrifices of the men and women that served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, Lee County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, Lee County veterans' population today totals 4,352. And whereas, veterans continue to serve this county in the Lee County Veterans Council, the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, disabled American veterans, the Marine Corps League, schools, church groups, civil service. And whereas, three veterans serve on the Lee County Board of Commissioners. And whereas, a veteran serves on the Lee County Board of Education. And whereas, Lee County is the home of the North Carolina Veterans Memorial and the newly dedicated North Carolina Disabled Veterans Monument. And whereas, Lee County appreciates all the sacrifices made by our United States military personnel while defending freedom. And we believe affording specific recognition to them and demonstrating appreciation of their service to honor and support. Therefore, be it resolved that Lee County hereby declares from November 6th through November 12th, 2023, designating as green light for military service. A time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our personnel in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, the Lee County Board of Commissioners encourage its citizens in a patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who've served immeasurable sacrifices, help preserve our freedoms by displaying a green light in their place of business or residence from November 6th through November 12th, 2023, presented this 16th day of October, 2023. As it was on the consent agenda, it was approved. And I thank you. If I can get my computer to operate here. All right. Next item on the agenda is the per diem policy for Board of Commissioners. And Commissioner Carver has requested modify the per diem travel policy for the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Carver?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we specify that compensation for employee or for commissioner travel be afforded in accordance with our policy number B-10, which requires us to follow the allowances of the federal meal and incidental expenses per diem rates, rather than a $150 flat rate.
Questions of the board? Commissioner Lovick?
What is that rate? Do you know any numbers or...
Yeah, that rate varies depending on where you go. If you're familiar with, I'm sure the chairman and I both had to live with those federal rates for a long time. But essentially, the federal rates are set based on, I probably zip code. I'm not sure how they're done now. And they look at it and try to tell what is a reasonable compensation in advance before you go there. And then they give you appropriate amount of money to pay for the expenses that you might have. And in particular, it would be meals in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Does the county manager have any thoughts on that?
At this point, you know, it's really the board's pleasure. The $150 is taxed differently than the flat per diem rate that the employees receive, the commissioners who travel and take the 150 plus the employees who may travel with them, and take the 150 as 100% taxed to those individuals where the flat per diem is not. So there is a differential in the way it's treated.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Based on the numbers I was reading, I can't get it to pull up right this second. But, correct me if I'm wrong, was the 100, I know, Commissioner Lovick, on your question, I think one of the first parts was like a 80 to 120, and then the second part was like a 20 to 40. So it looked like the 150 we're using was an average of that. Is that right, Lisa? Sorry.
The 150, I'll have to, please, I don't know the answer for sure, how they came up with 150. That was established back in the early 90s before I came on board and has been the standard rate ever since. The city also does something similar for their city council when they travel to national meetings and staff that travels with them. They actually have it incorporated into their personnel policy, where we in the past have only included our ordinance. So if you decide to consider it, I would recommend that you do put it in our personnel policy as an add-in to that.
Okay. And then, I guess my other question would be, is there a benefit, Commissioner Carver, to how you're requesting it to be done versus how it's currently done now?
Well, I think the thing that I'm requesting is what our policy says for everybody except commissioners. And giving a little bit of feedback on where this came from, I read from the role of the clerk to the board. It says, "Any commissioner requiring special hotel or travel accommodations should coordinate with the clerk. Commissioners are awarded a per diem of $150 a day for out-of-state travel and national meetings to offset expenses." This per diem was established several years ago to help offset expenses for spouses and guests that may attend the conference or meeting. Well, that's in direct violation of our employee travel policy, which says we're not supposed to do anything to provide funds to support guests and spouses attending conferences. The other issue is that quite simply, and there's a lot of things you can talk about and how we do per diem, but it seems to me that the bottom line is commissioners should not be compensated for more than their business expenses. Now, it's been my experience that if I was to get the $150 rather than the way that I've requested it, it would be significantly more. So there are other aspects of this. For example, that the, at most conferences, they're very generous in providing opportunities to have meals and all that kind of thing. So I guess my feeling is we just don't need that much money that taxpayers have to pay. With respect to the issue of taxes, no matter what happens, if this money comes to you because you went to a conference and you pay taxes on it, you still stand to gain whatever's left after you've paid the taxes on it. So it's, in the sense of looking at it as a per diem, I don't know. It certainly works to the advantage of the commissioner.
Okay. So it's the commissioner that is, so the employees have a separate per diem?
Yes. The employees follow the federal per diem rates, which vary by city. Sorry, I was trying to find it. I don't remember the exact numbers, since I'm not in that day-to-day now. But I will say that depending on where the employees decide to eat, the employees can take away money from this also. And it's not taxed.
So just to be clear, you've got that on either side?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Where is the problem?
I think the problem is that in my experience, this compensation exceeds the expenses, the business expenses that commissioners incur when they're going to a conference.
And you're saying that's in violation of the law or something?
I'm saying it's in violation of our employee travel things. I mean, we could read it, but it says, "An employee of an official county business is expected to exercise the same care and occurring expenses that a prudent person would exercise if traveling on personal business and expending personal funds. Excess cuts, luxury accommodations, services unnecessary or unjustified are prohibited." So basically, it's the idea that why should I go to a conference and end up coming back with money in excess of what my business expenses are?
you tell, I'm asking the manager and council, does the city have a similar policy?
Yes, sir.
And it works for them?
Yes, sir. They allow it for the national conferences that their city council attend, and along with any staff that travels with them. Point of clarification, I did find it, the lowest per diem anywhere would be $59 a day. The highest is roughly $74 in certain places in North Carolina, and that's probably about the highest you would get out of state also. So where we do, one off the top of my head, is the NACO Conference in Washington. Under the per diem, you would get $74, that would not be taxed at all. Instead, we would give you $150 per day, and it is taxable. So you're looking almost double.
I don't think I've ever used this, but I think the difference, I think, back in the day it was discussed, I think it had to do with the fact employees were still making hourly wage at the same time too, right? When they're off to conference?
Yes, they are being paid.
They are being paid, and Commissioner, in essence, maybe not be, I don't know.
I'd rather see the policy amended so that the option is available. If I choose to pay the taxes on the $150, that's what I want to do.
And that is the option we always offer our employees that travel with them and the commissioners, whether or not you want the 150 or the federal per diem?
Well, that works for me.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Reeves?
It is.
The motion is you can choose which one you'd like to do.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Point of order, we have a motion on the floor. Amendment would be appropriate, but not a motion.
No, I'm offering a motion, and we can vote on yours first if you like.
Commissioner Sharp, if I can get your input or questions, please.
I'm sure the people, the commissioners back in the 90s were some wise folks that said this at $150.
That's not enough right now?
Yeah, well, I've been at this 16 years, I think I've been on one conference, you know, if, whether it's 150, 200, or 250, if you don't want to spend any money, just spend your own money. That's what I.
That's why you need the option. So, Mr. Chair, you can handle the first, the motion on the table, or you can handle the motion?
Was there a motion?
I didn't hear a motion being recommended, but I'm taking Commissioner Carver's modify, he just says modify, just modify. So.
I stated the motion, Mr. Chairman, I don't, do you have it?
I did. A very good.
Okay, all right, and that motion was, I didn't, I didn't note it. The only thing I got was I wrote down spouses and guests, which is in violation of our policy.
I think I may have written it down, if that helps, I didn't know I wrote it down. Move to change commissioner travel to be in accordance with B-10, follow allowance federal per diem rate as opposed to the $150 flat rate, was that correct?
That's correct.
All right, you've heard the motion, and the motion is to change our policy from the $150 per day rate to the standard federal.
Can I clarify something here, since I was the maker of the motion?
Please.
There's a lot of things we're talking about here, but in the end, our policy authorizes commissioners to be paid in excess of their business expenses. And it's been my experience, both in the public and the government arena, that people are very careful to make sure that we don't take advantage of money that's coming from taxpayers, regardless of whether or not we're going to cover it as a taxable quantity or something. And that's the issue. The bottom line is, should commissioners be compensated more than their business expense? If you vote against that motion that I just made, you in fact are advocating that that's okay, that we can spend the taxpayers' money this way. And I think that's a problem.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If your expenses were just 100 and you had $150 allowance, you can bring your $50 and give it back to the county, that'd be, if that's what you feel like doing.
That's why you need the option.
All right, so I do have your motion from the email from many days ago. Motion to change the policy on per diem from commissioners for commissioner by providing reimbursement in accordance with current federal meal and incidental expenses per diem rates, consistent with the requirements and travel procedures for the county staff.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the motion that we read in that.
Okay, I didn't write it down, so please.
That's okay.
You want me to say it again?
Please.
Okay. Move to change commissioner travel to be in accordance with policy B-10 to follow the federal per diem allowance rate as opposed to the $150 flat rate.
Is that a motion, or are we taking out about the spouses and guests also, to make that part legal?
I believe the spouses and guests is in our handbook, is that correct?
Yes.
And we have changed that? I was.
We are working on, yes.
Working on changing it, so we haven't changed that?
We're good on that.
Okay. And I have an amendment to the motion to choose, have, allow the commissioner to choose either $150 or follow the federal allowance rate. Is that correct, Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, and to modify the policy to be in line with what the city is proposing or has in place.
All right, so we vote on the amendment first? We're going to vote on the amendment first, which is modify the policy and choose, allow the commissioner to choose either 150 or the federal rate. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. And then do we go back to the original motion?
Yeah, I think we need to amend the original.
Okay. And then the original motion, as amended in accordance with policy B-10, follow federal allowance rate for meals, as well as having the option to choose either the $150 per diem per day or follow the federal allowance rate. That is the motion?
Not the motion.
Okay, and we had the amendment to the motion, we amended the motion. Is that final?
Yes.
Okay, so we're final, we don't need voting.
And then I think you have to go back and do the original motion.
We're voting on the motion as amended.
Yeah.
Correct.
We already did that. So we're good.
All right, okay.
We're good.
Which basically invalidates the motion from the beginning, but that's the process.
Well, it gives the option, I mean, to be honest with you, I don't like taking junkets on the county's dime. I just would like to be reimbursed for driving all those distances, but I understand what your point is. So the policy now allows the commissioners to choose either or for reimbursement on per diem. And as Commissioner Sharp says, if you feel that you've exceeded or did not exceed the 150, then feel free to provide back the money. Okay, thank you. Did we finalize that, or do we have to vote on the amended motion?
We, I think we did, we voted on the amended.
Okay, okay, we added the amendment and voted, okay.
Voted on the amendment, right? That's okay.
Well, the amendment gave us options.
You voted on the amendment.
Which then. It does not kill the motion, however, to amend it, right?
Right, you can vote again if you like, with the actual amended motions that passed.
Okay, will, will, the motion, do I have a motion to vote on the amended motion? Motion has been made to vote on the amended motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Add-on request for Bread of Life Ministries for funding to operate an extreme weather shelter. And I do have, I asked for it to be put on the agenda for discussion, and if I could confer with the county manager.
So we received a request from Bread of Life Ministries for potential funding of the cold weather shelter for this coming winter. They're asking for roughly $21,600. They sent that letter to me on September 12th, I did not bring it to you at the last meeting because it was my understanding that the city council would be considering this. We then further received a letter on October 6th. Chairman Smith and I both received a letter from the S-3 Housing Connect in support of the funding for the Bread of Life Ministries. The city did discuss this at their work session last Tuesday, and it's my understanding that they will be considering the funding at their meeting tomorrow, so it would be my recommendation to you that you table the request until the City of Sanford considers the request, to see what they are going to do.
Questions for the manager, Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, just moved to approve tabling.
Motion been made to table continuing, Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbik? Questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I didn't hear what they were requesting from the county.
They were requesting, it appears from their letter, to be roughly $21,600 to pay for general staffing for the coming season for their cold weather, or extreme weather shelter.
$21,000?
Yes, $21,600.
And the city is considering carrying that?
Yes, sir, it's my understanding, we will know more after their meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Do they need to have a answer before, like, so say the city would not approve it tomorrow, would they need then us to approve it before our November meeting? Would they need funds? I don't know when the cold weather, I know he said below, I think when he spoke about it, he said below like 34, I think, 33?
35 degrees and below is the gauge they use.
Okay.
Hopefully, we would stay above that between now and our next meeting.
Okay.
Are there beds available at the other shelters?
Good question. According to S-3's letter, part of the reason for asking for the funding is the overcapacity. I have not been able to verify those numbers to say they are overcapacity.
Mr. Chairman, can I address that?
Please.
I was at the S-3 meeting the other day when this issue was discussed, and I think the average number during the days when they had the shelter open was 18, and it exceeded the number of people that were available to go, or the beds, that exceeded the, by 18 the number of beds available in the regular shelter, on average.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Okay. And I'm curious, attorney, for the county attorney, in this case, when this comes before the board again, we're going to table it, well, we're going to vote to table it, does Commissioner Sharp need to recuse himself?
No.
Okay.
Unless he has accomplished with Bread of Life, I don't think.
And I don't think I do.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, as a city employee. Okay, the motion been made to table to the, till the decision made by the city. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to say something. First of all, one of the reasons that I'm in favor of tabling it is that, you remember last time, we passed a situation where there's now $50,000 available for nonprofits to appeal for help in areas like this. I know that the Bread of Life has submitted a request for that, and it's in the process of being considered as a possibility of falling under that umbrella. So the motion to table seems to make sense, because we don't know whether or not they might be able to get a finance there. The other thing is, based on the conversation in S-3 that I was at with respect to the city's support, it was definitely not clear the city is supporting the whole bill. And as a matter of fact, the people that were representing Bread of Life were considering talking to both of us because they felt that there might be need from both organizations to provide this help during the cold weather.
I saw the nonverbal, Lisa, regarding the 50,000, can we clarify that, please?
Right. There, when there's no 50,000.
500,000.
So of that, there is a specific list of items that are subject for reimbursement. There's 250,000 set aside for that, and there's 250,000 set aside for mental health, contracted mental health services. But we tried to explain that at the last meeting, plus we tried to explain it to the nonprofits who came out. This is not a funding application process. This is, that 250 is set aside for specific reimbursement purposes, and they would have to be able to show where they have paid expenses that qualify under those lists, that list, and request reimbursement. So I don't know how unless they're providing housing for a particular person and can provide us that cost as an expense they've paid. So if they were paying for someone to go stay at a hotel overnight or something to that effect, that would be reimbursable, but just to pay them $21,600 as an app, out to them would not be one of those qualified expenses.
Okay, and then?
I got a question, go ahead. Do you have a, hand out an example of what, how it would work?
Yes, sir, we provided all that to the nonprofits who came the other Friday to the meeting, everything was provided to them.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to table is made, any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Managers report the July 2023 sales tax report, and Candace Iceman? There were some shocking numbers there.
Yes, good evening. Our July 2023 sales tax revenue numbers are in, and we are down 11.66% from, from the same fiscal period, from the same period last fiscal year. And it was found that our overall collections were actually up by 3% from the same period last year, but our refunds totaled a great deal more than last year, so well over $400,000 more than last, the same time last year. So we will continue to monitor the sales tax numbers and revisit any, adjust as needed, revisit any decisions that may need to be made.
Questions for Candace, please. Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik?
Of course. What qualifies for a refund?
I'm sorry?
What qualifies for a refund?
So there, so for instance, the county does get a refund for their sales tax, so if another nonprofit had filed for their refund and received it, that's what, that's what that would qualify.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Commissioner Reeves?
None.
Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the county managers report, please.
A quick rundown of some of our various projects. At the Moore Training Facility, a public hearing was held Thursday, September 14th, at the McSwain Center regarding the permit for the site there. There was, there were no comments received at the meeting or in writing, so the permit is effective on September 20th. TerraQuest Environmental has installed the skimmer system and is continuing hazardous waste mitigation as previously approved by the Board of Commissioners. The Multi-Sports Complex, we are moving ahead with our project. Also, remind you that the naming options is open at this point in time, and will be open through next Friday, I think it is, where's Ben? Yes, I got that right. So if you are interested in naming it, submitting a name, please do so, you can do that through our website and other options that are available through social media. We are continuing to work with DOT on the control access information, and we will get information out to you as soon as possible regarding the groundbreaking ceremony that we hope to be able to coordinate along with the naming of the park. Horton Pool officially closed for the season on September 17th, after the grand opening on September 8th. We are working to resolve the final payment with Southeast Aquatics on that project. Phase 1 and 2 of Parks Projects at Temple, playground equipment assembly and construction continues. We are, they were slightly delayed by the Hurricane Idalia and some other delays related to the turf delivery. We're also continuing to work on the restrooms and the picnic tables being installed there. Kiwanis Children's Park, as you'll see, the bid documents have been prepared by Withers Ravanelle and reviewed by Lee County, and we're hoping to bid both Kiwanis Children's Park and OT Sloan in December of 2023. We continue to move ahead with the library project, we're continuing to work on trying to get our sewer, our utility assessment from the adjacent property over to the property we have for the library. Historic Courthouse, we're continuing to work on that project. We do know that the August 24th, 2024 grant funding deadline has been confirmed, but we're continuing to work with Hobbs and the State, the State Historic Preservation Office to keep that project moving and make sure we complete that in a deadline timeframe. Feasibility study, you approved that contract tonight, so we'll be, continue to work on that. You also approved the comprehensive fire study tonight, so we'll be kicking that one off in the near future and look forward to that. Jail lock upgrade should have begun today, and they have moved inmates to three different jails to accommodate that process, and hopefully we'll be able to knock that out in less than the four weeks that we have committed to have those inmates out. Health and well-being initiative, after y'all approved that at the last meeting, we held a information session on the new program Friday, October 6th, at the Buggy Building. We had 16 different organizations come and attend that meeting, and Angelina and her staff did an excellent job of presenting the information. So the application period for organizations to participate closes November 6th. I know that at this point, we've already received one. I know that at this point, we've already received one application, and those applications will be reviewed by staff and make sure they meet the requirements, and then we'll be bringing that list to you for your consideration on November 20th. You have several different reports attached. Couple of things that I do need to ask y'all to consider tonight. December 4th is your next scheduled board, oh, excuse me, is your board meeting scheduled in December? As usual, that's the first Monday night, which always conflicts with the Sanford Christmas parade. So, if we start at 6, it will be a little hard for people to attend, so I believe there has been a request to move that meeting to 4 that day. So, we need to consider that.
Do I have a motion for December 4th to move the meeting to 4:00 PM at the McSwain Center?
Some.
Motion's been made to move the December 4th meeting to 4:00 PM at the McSwain Center. Any further discussion?
Very light agenda.
A very light agenda will be added to the emotion.
We will do our best. Okay, also.
I've got a motion, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Motion to add is, been motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, done.
Also, in the month of January, our meetings would fall normally on the 1st and the 15th. Both of those are scheduled holidays, so we need to decide if y'all want to just move those to the 2nd and 4th Monday nights.
Do I have a motion to move the January meetings due to holidays to the 2nd and 4th Monday?
Some move.
Motion's been made to move the January meetings to the 2nd and 4th Mondays in order to acquire the facilities. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, then just a couple of little things of information. The week of October 23rd through October 27th, the Summit Building staff will be relocated to a combination of the EOC, the Tax Department, and the Buggy Factory while the painting and recarpeting of the Summit Building is going on. So, if you're looking for any of us, we should have phone access and email, but if you're looking for any of us physically and can't find us, let me know and I'll figure out who you're looking for and tell you where they are. I've already reminded you about the naming of the park, and as some of you may have seen in the newspaper, we are in conversations with the city about the microtransit project that they're, have possibly receiving grant funding for. We are looking at possibly partnering or contracting with them to help move that grant ahead. So, just wanted to give y'all a heads up. Sorry that you read about it in the paper before we got it to you, but some things got ahead of us. So, but we are trying to work out some sort of a possibility of contracting with them and having, not bringing in a competitive transportation system into the county. And you also see that there are various upcoming events coming up. You have the Veterans Day Dinner on November 1st at the Enrichment Center. We'll have our meeting November 6th. Reminder that our offices will be closed on November 10th for Veterans Day, followed up with a November 20th board meeting, and then we'll be closed holidays November 26th and 27th. We just discussed the December 4th meeting and timing of that, and don't forget that we'll be having our retreat on December 14th and 15th.
Questions for the manager? Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbik?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Commissioner comments? We'll start with Commissioner Carver.
It was, looking forward to, uh, the work that everybody's doing so well, I think, in the county. I'm, I'm, I'm just so impressed as I step back and look at the things we've been made, able to accomplish already this year. Being frank with you, however, I think we're making a mistake to set ourselves up as people who have the right to make the choice to take money that's not otherwise expended on a, on a, a conference. I just don't think that sells very well. We had, we spent an awful lot of time talking about how we are trying to protect the expenses of the county during the budgeting process, and yet here's something where we could make sure that we're taking care of it ourselves, and we go ahead and leave it up to people to make up their own minds. I'm just not sure about that. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, Commissioner Lovick?
Yes, uh, thank you for Boy Scout troops coming out tonight and doing our pledge, and thank you for the good remarks about the pledge allegiance. We thank you for that. The public coming out, making their comments. I always like to tell them that, and I'm going to call out Ben tonight. I told him earlier, coming in, thank him for the fine work he did at our last meeting that he wasn't able to present, but thank you to all our staff also. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbik?
I guess my only comment is, it's, I guess in response, but by people, you're inferencing commissioners are not being good with, with their, the money on their, um, I'm going to speak for myself. I attend conferences, and I don't do it to try and profit from taxpayers. I'm the last person in here that's going to say that I know it all, and as a new commissioner, I feel that it's my best to continue to learn, and by doing that is attending conferences. I'm taking time off of work that I'm not getting paid, um, time away from, things that I could be doing outside of learning, and I go to travel, or I go to conferences in order to learn, not to make the money. And I myself am a good steward of the taxpayers' money, so I think any inference outside of that needs to be within your own feelings, not projected onto the rest of us. So, that's all.
Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you for saying that, because you're a taxpayer like I am, so. I was going to ask all of us to continue praying for peace, worldwide peace. These uprisings are just horrible, and you know, it makes it hard for you to rest. So, keep world peace at the forefront, please. I'm not going to address your comment about $150 tonight, because I'm asking for peace. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. There was an event downtown this weekend. It was kind of damp, but I think last year they had between 15,000 and 17,000 people. They didn't quite get there this year, but it was still a robust crowd there, and, and I would just like to compliment Kelly Daddi, the CEO of Downtown Sanford, for a good job she did putting that together. That's all.
Thank you. I too was not able to make that downtown event, because I was in the mountains, but my wife and grandkids went, and they had a great time. Lot of, very positive compliments. The mental health board consolidation with the Sand Hills and East Point is in the Department of Health and Human Services Secretary's hands. He sent two letters, one saying he got it, and then the second letter came out after the state passed the budget, and he still says he's still got it. So, the no decision has been made. Manufacturing Day, it was held at the Moore Center, was absolutely fantastic. There was a massive crowd there. Then I had to run away from there and go to another event, and then the Jetport Family Day, I just want to compliment the Family Day. I mean, that's a great venue. We got done with a soccer game. We grant, we took the grandson over there, let him enjoy himself, and believe it or not, the chief executive officer of the airport gave him a special tour. Got him in the golf cart, and we rode around the airport. I have a picture to prove it. And that, coming back from the mountains yesterday, I got off of the 421 bypass, got off at Broadway Road, and I saw Sanford Contractors Heavy Earth Merving Equipment right across the road as they get off the exit. So, they're pre-positioning equipment to start the process. As soon as we give them the time, we're going to turn the dirt. I can't say enough for the staff. They work hard. They've done a great job. They continue to do the business for this county, and I commend them. And I want to say thank you to PAC 942 for visiting, and two of you hung in there. I'm impressed. I'm impressed. Sorry it wasn't longer, but that's okay. I bet you all have homework to do tonight. So, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? We're now adjourned. Thank you.